Good evening, everyone, and welcome to your Laguna Niguel City Hall for our city council meeting on Tuesday, February 5th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. I can see I have levers of all things local politics because national politics is certainly on the news as we sit here. So, thank you very much for coming. Our regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesdays of every month in these various council chambers, and we invite you back time and again. This is what it's for, and we appreciate you being here. This time, I'd like to have our city clerk, Eileen Gomez, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rains?
Present.
Councilmember Jenaway?
Present.
Councilmember Minigar?
Present.
Mayor Protem Davies?
Here.
And Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. I'd like to begin our program tonight, as we always do, by having our invocation ask Derek Zellner from the South Source Church to come forward, and then we will have Girl Scout Brownie Troop 5476 come forward to leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please all stand.
Thank you, please show me your card.
Audience attention. Color guard advance. Color guard present the colors. With the Honorable Mayor, City Council. Audience, please join the Pledge of Allegiance. I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Audience may be seated.
Girls, if you'd stay right there, we will be right down to take some pictures and say hi. Thank you very much. Do we have troop leaders here with us? Come on down. Oh, you're good. Welcome, thanks so much for having me. Well, this is pretty special. We're really, really happy to have you all here tonight. I want to make sure that everyone gets to say hello to you, so I'm going to pass the microphone around and let you say hi, and if you would, just tell us your first name, what school you go to, and what grade you're in. I'll start here on my end.
Hello, my name is Harper Rose, and I go to Bergerson Elementary School, and I'm in second grade.
Hello, my name's Sophia Ramirez, and I am in second grade, and I go to Bergerson Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Ava Alfred, and I'm in second grade, and I go to Bergerson Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Sophia Adamo, and I go to Bergerson Elementary School, and I'm in second grade.
Hello, my name is Erin Ryan, I'm in second grade, and I'm in Bergerson Elementary School.
My name is Amber Alfred, and I am the troop leader for 5476.
But you didn't tell us what grade you're in. On behalf of the city, I just wanted to present our troop leader with a commemorative coin for our 30th anniversary, just to say thank you for all the service that you do. Girls, thank you for all you do. You're our future leaders, so what you do in Brownies is extraordinarily important. So, we're so happy, as part of the city council, to be here with you today. So, thanks again. Will you come back and join us? Come see us again? Okay, great. All right, let's get some pictures. Who's letting us go?
The guard gives me.
Awesome, well done. Let's give them another hand. Good job, girls. Thank you so much. We'll be presenting some pretty special awards tonight that sort of commemorate a whole lot of service, and there's a lot of them, but because there's a lot of them, it in no way lessens the contributions that each of them have made. And so, when you see these and you hear these, I want to make sure you know that there are years and years of service behind this, and many, many hours, week after week after week. And this is only one way that the city can say thank you. So, we're very happy to have these people here tonight. I'm going to call up them by committee, and if you would, just come on up, and we will present them, if I could get one of my helpful presenters to help present. I'll call out the names, and if you would, come on up. Going to start with our Investment, Banking, and Audit Committee, and these are people who have volunteered their time, and we are giving them a plaque for that service. The two here tonight are David Simpson and Michael Yoshida. Thank you very much. And our extraordinarily important Parks and Recreation Commission is next. This is Robin Cashin. She was on from 2013 to 2018. Five years. And I should have said, and I will now, that Dave Simpson was on from 2015 to 2018, and Michael, brace yourself for this one, 2007 to 2018. So, thank you, sir. Next, moving on to Planning Commission. He's not here, okay? I'm going to move on from that one for a second. Senior Citizens Committee, Wilma Goodman. Is Wilma here? Okay. This one I know is here. Sports Advisory Committee, Susan Stott. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And next, our Traffic and Transportation Commission. We have from 2017 to 18, Bill Lieber. Is Bill? There he is. We have Joe Williams Jr. from 2015 to 2018. And we have Stephanie Winstead, 2013 to 2018. Bill, thanks, brother. Appreciate it. Congratulations. Thank you. Joe, thanks, brother. Appreciate it. And next, we have our Military Support, and hopefully, one of you all parked in our veteran parking outside. It's brand-new, so if you haven't caught it, it's just outside, but we have brand-new veteran parking. So, from our Military Support Committee, 2015 to 18, Carl David. Colonel? Brad DeTroyno. Brad, good job.
You get to park outside?
Yeah.
Thanks, brother.
Mike Purien. And another almost lifer, Bev Resch, 2012, 2018. And this evening, we have a special presentation of one of our beloved Military Support Committee members, Dave Mellon, who passed away this past year, and this time, I wanted to present the plaque to Valerie Mellon, his wife. Thank you so much. From a grateful city, we appreciate you. And I also have something I wanted to let Mayor Protem Davies and Councilmember Jenaway, if they could.
First of all, we want to thank you so much for the service. And having the opportunity of met Dave and worked with Dave, it's been such a blessing in my life, so I greatly appreciate that. And he's done so much for the military support, and I know what a leader he was, and we couldn't have done it without him, so we thank you for that.
I remember the dinner that my husband and I were with you and Dave, the Marine Dinner, and Dave was so proud and happy to share the traditions of the Marines with us. So, thank you for that. Thank you for sharing Dave with the city. He has made a significant impact in how we are able to serve our veterans and our active duty. He was a backbone of the committee from the beginning. We have for you the flag that was flown over City Hall. We were able to retrieve the flag that was flown on Dave's birthday.
And on behalf of a grateful city, I want to introduce you to what service and leadership looks like. These individuals have done an amazing job, and we say thank you. So, if we could, let's have everybody gather in a little bit. We'll get some pictures, and do I need to get one of the Army guys to make sure this all runs on time, or? All right. Let's give them one more big hand. Thank you so much, everyone. And that concludes our presentations. We can retire back to the dais. That concludes our presentation portion of tonight's meeting and brings us to Public Communications. Anyone who would like to address us will need to complete a form. It's the gold color Request to Speak form, which is in the back in the corner. These forms are available to you. Please be aware, the time limit will be limited to three minutes this evening for each person to speak. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given from one speaker to another. You may have another person read your written statement, however, and I have a couple of forms. I want to check and see, city clerk Gomez, are there any more forms?
No, Mayor, those are it.
Great, thank you very much. And so, with that, I'll open Public Communications. The first speaker I have tonight is Keith Ratai from the city of Mission Viejo. If you would, please state your name and address, please.
Sorry, I'm a little tall. My name is Keith Ratai. I'm the Assistant City Manager for the city of Mission Viejo, and our address is 200 Civic Center, Mission Viejo.
Thank you, sir, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm here this evening to take just a few seconds and introduce our new Animal Services manager. As you know, Laguna Niguel was one of our original partners back in 1995, so we are very happy to have you, and as you probably also know, we've grown quite a bit since 1995, and we have five cities that we serve now. So, we took a great opportunity to find somebody who would be able to take on the challenge and really work with all five cities to really grow our program. So, I'd like, I'm happy to introduce, her name is Michelle Claude Clemente. She's just going to take a few minutes.
Hey, welcome.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Nice to meet you. I just wanted to introduce myself. I've been with the city of Mission Viejo for about two months now. I come from northern parts of Orange County, and I am just getting used to the curvy streets that you all have down here, figuring out my way around, but I'm very excited to be here and to serve your community. I'm really excited to work with you and develop programs to really engage all of our communities that work with us at Mission Viejo and our Animal Services Department. So, my name's Michelle Claude Clemente. I've worked in municipal government in Orange County for about 25 years. I have a background in program development, education, and animal husbandry-type things. So, I have a broad kind of array of experiences, and I'm really excited to get to share them with our cities that we serve. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much for coming, and as a proud pet owner, we are glad to have you here too, so thanks very much.
And I won't commit to which kind of person I am, but I shared it with the mayor earlier.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Patty Mouton. Welcome back, Patty. If you would say your name and address for us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council and Laguna Niguel neighbors. My name is Patty Mouton. My address is 29592 Pelican Way, Laguna Niguel, for 31 years. I'm here tonight, I represent Alzheimer's Orange County, the Orange County Aging Services Collaborative, and to give you a quick report on the 18-month recap for the Orange County Strategic Plan on Aging. Your Alzheimer's Orange County Social Services Agency continues to provide tremendous amount of, thank you, services and supports, free of charge, to people who are coping with all forms of dementia, and in a broader scope, we operate two Adult Day Healthcare Centers for frail older adults, not dementia-specific, so any frail older adults that need care during the daytime. That includes nursing, physical therapy, occupational therapy, help with mobility, and intellectual functionality stimulation. It's a great day. I've included in your packets information about Alzheimer's Orange County, just to keep it top of mind, in case there are folks that you run into that need our services. We are in leadership of a formalized collaborative of about 40 not-for-profit agencies that serve older adults in Orange County. Some of you may know that Orange County is the fastest aging region in the United States of America. We will have more 85-year-olds here in Orange County than any other place in the country. And so, the best way to not only manage the special needs of people who are aging in place, but really help them thrive and enjoy the greatest quality of life, is to plan ahead. The Strategic Plan for Aging has looked at 10 pillars that are very important for individuals who are aging in place in our community: senior nutrition, food security, technology, transportation, healthcare, access to housing, social engagement, and elder abuse awareness. Successful aging depends upon partnerships and making age-friendly communities. Laguna Niguel is one of the cities in the county that has participated in funding the work of the Strategic Plan for Aging, along with the Orange County Board of Supervisors, and I thank you for that. It's my home community, so I'm really proud that y'all stepped up and are interested in this really important issue. We're all getting there. Every day we're here, we're aging, and so, it's really our responsibility to be looking to the needs of those who are here in our community now, who are older and need our extra support, and for those who are continuing to age, myself included. I'll turn 63 in April. So, we have met many of the goals we set out in the 18-month original plan, and it's just really important to me, as a citizen of Laguna Niguel, and as a professional and in leadership in aging services in our county, that we keep top of mind the needs of our citizens as we get older, and that we look toward programs, facilities, classes, that will expand our ability to serve people even better than we do today. I met with Mayor Jennings earlier, and he asked me what letter grade I would give Laguna Niguel in terms of aging services, and you know, I'd give us a high B+.
That's your time.
He wants an A, so I made some suggestions, and I certainly appreciate the work we've done to date, and if you have questions about the Strategic Plan for Aging, I'll be happy to entertain them when convenient. Thank you very much.
Patty, and thank you for meeting today, and I want to say thank you for all you're doing for our seniors and our friends and our neighbors that are aging in place, and it's fantastic. I also want to thank Councilwoman Jenaway for her service to all our seniors, and I know that's a very big deal, and I promise you, we'll be hoofing for the A soon, so we're trying, so.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Our next public speaker is Juan Gonzalez. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Juan Gonzalez, SoCal Gas Public Affairs. Thank you so much for the opportunity before you this evening. Quickly, purpose of my visit, I wanted to, first and foremost, again, it's a little bit past the New Year, but wish everybody a Happy New Year. I'm making my rounds throughout the different city councils, different cities and different councils within my territory. As you may be aware, I think from my previous time I was here, SoCal Gas Public Affairs Manager, covering from the city of Lake Forest all the way down to San Clemente, city of San Ana, and unincorporates parts of the county, so 13 jurisdictions can be pretty busy. But again, the purpose of my visit is primarily for informational purposes. I wanted to bring to the attention to this body regarding some state activities, state legislature activity, that can potentially affect all of you and all of your residents. This past legislative session, there was a couple of particular bills that came into play that potentially, again, could have a huge impact. As all of you are aware, SoCal Gas provides safe, affordable, reliable energy to, from by Sunday all the way to the San Diego, Mexican border, close to 22 million customers. And essentially, with these particular bills of legislation that we brought up in this last legislative session, we're intended to try to make the state entirely electrical. There was two pieces of legislation that would have required, number one, that by 2022, all buildings, all new buildings in the state of California be just all-electric. And there was another piece of legislation that by 2030 would have required that all, again, buildings, homes would have to be retrofitted from the use of natural gas to just becoming all-electric. I can share with all of you that I've been in other city councils where residents within the city have been coming before council, trying to figure out why their electrical bills have been so high. Now, and these particular bills were primarily during the summer time. Now, imagine what that would look like if all your major appliances at your home were all-electric. So, again, wanting to bring this item to your attention, and again, the intent is, well, there's good intentions off of it, the reduction of greenhouse gases is something that is important, and we should all work on that, but the way that it's being done is extreme, and it's something that is just not possible. And again, we want to bring this to the intention. And I can share with you, SoCal Gas is taking steps in terms of reducing greenhouse gases. We're working closely with an environmental company in the Inland Empire where we're breaking down organic waste, food waste, breaking that down and putting it into our pipeline. And right now, we also have a project with our northern territory, we're working with dairy farms where we're taking cow manure, breaking that down, and putting that into our pipeline as a form of renewable natural gas.
You have 20 seconds.
And again, so my purpose and intention is just to primarily inform you of all these activities taking place in the state and making you aware. Again, in no way, shape, or form, is SoCal Gas against electrification. It's something that residents and owners should be able to do, but it's not something that the state should impose upon anybody. So, just want to make you aware, and thank you so much for the time and opportunity for you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, Juan, thank you for coming. Our next public speaker is Stephanie Winstead. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Stephanie Winstead. Address is 29436 Point Royale in the beautiful city of Laguna Niguel. I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce, and, sorry, talk. Sorry. There we go. Okay. Okay, so I'm here because I wanted to share a few things that the Chamber of Commerce is doing to outreach to the residents regarding the local businesses. You all should have received a copy of the Laguna Niguel Guide in your mailboxes. It has hit the city, and all of the residents have received a copy of it. There are some very informative articles regarding the city and benefits to the city. There's extra copies of this publication available in the Chamber office. Also, I want you to know that the Chamber does, or the guide does work in educating residents with regard to things that are going on in the city, the benefits of the city, and Chamber businesses. Every single year that this guide comes out, I personally receive a call from a resident who's looking for legal services. So, the guide does work. Also, the Chamber is promoting Coffee with a Cop, which is next week, Wednesday, at Plumeria Cafe over in the Laguna Niguel Design Center. That's from about 7:00 to 9:00 AM. The first networking breakfast of the year will be Friday, February 15th, over at El Niguel Country Club, and that's from about 7:30 to 9:00 o'clock. The breakfast sponsor will be Amy Groupi with Laguna Niguel Wellness. I know that Councilmember Rains has visited Laguna Niguel Wellness, and I do encourage everybody, if you haven't been there, please check them out. They're a new local business, and it's wonderful to support our local business owners. Incidentally, Ms. Groupi is a retired teacher, so it's kind of near and dear to a lot of people's hearts. The Chamber would really like to be of service to the city with regards to the celebrations that are planning upcoming. I know we'll hear more about that later, but I just wanted to say that the Chamber is anxious and happy to be of service, and the logo is beautiful. Also, the Chamber members would like to be involved in the upcoming Youth Committee, High School, and Job Fair, so if there's any way that the Chamber members can be of service in job placement, so just want to let everybody know about that, if there's any outreach that can be done regarding that. These are all methods that the Chamber is trying to reach out to the residents, educate them regarding the benefits of the Chamber, and a lot of people don't know what the Chamber of Commerce does, and it's really important that the Chamber succeeds, and when there's a successful Chamber, there's a successful city. So, any suggestions on how to educate the residents with regards to the Chamber of Commerce would be very welcome. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Stephanie.
Thank you.
City clerk Gomez, any more requests to speak?
No, Mayor, that was the last one.
Great, thanks. It's such, public communications are now closed. We'll move on to our consent counters. We have items 1 through 9. I want to check with my council
...stimulation. It's a great day. I've included in your packets information about Alzheimer's Orange County, just to keep it top of mind in case there are folks that you run into that need our services. We are in leadership of a formalized collaborative of about forty not-for-profit agencies that serve older adults in Orange County. Some of you may know that Orange County is the fastest aging region in the United States of America. We will have more eighty-five-year-olds here in Orange County than any other place in the country. And so, the best way to not only manage the special needs of people who are aging in place, but really help them thrive and enjoy the greatest quality of life, is to plan ahead. The Strategic Plan for Aging has looked at ten pillars that are very important for individuals who are aging in place in our community: senior nutrition, food security, technology, transportation, healthcare, access to housing, social engagement, and elder abuse awareness. Successful aging depends upon partnerships and making age-friendly communities. Laguna Niguel is one of the cities in the county that has participated in funding the work of the Strategic Plan for Aging, along with the Orange County Board of Supervisors. And I thank you for that. It's my home community, so I'm really proud that y'all stepped up and are interested in this really important issue. We're all getting there. Every day we're here, we're aging. And so, it's really our responsibility to be looking to the needs of those who are here in our community now, who are older and need our extra support, and for those who are continuing to age, myself included. I'll turn sixty-three in April. So, we have met many of the goals we set out in the eighteen-month original plan. And it's just really important to me, as a citizen of Laguna Niguel, and as a professional and in leadership in aging services in our county, that we keep top of mind the needs of our citizens as we get older, and that we look toward programs, facilities, classes, that will expand our ability to serve people even better than we do today. I met with Mayor Jennings earlier, and he asked me what letter grade I would give Laguna Niguel in terms of aging services. And, you know, I'd give us a high B-plus.
That's your time.
He wants an A. So, I made some suggestions, and I certainly appreciate the work we've done to date. And if you have questions about the Strategic Plan for Aging, I'll be happy to entertain them when convenient. Thank you very much.
Thank Patty, and thank you for meeting today. And I want to say thank you for all you're doing for our seniors and our friends and our neighbors that are aging in place, and it's fantastic. I also want to thank Councilwoman Jenaway for her service to all our seniors, and I know that's a very big deal, and I promise you we'll be hoofing for the A soon. So, we're trying, so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Our next public speaker is Juan Gonzalez. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Juan Gonzalez, SoCal Gas Public Affairs. Thank you so much for the opportunity before you this evening. Quickly, purpose of my visit, I wanted to, first and foremost, again, it's a little bit past the new year, but wish everybody a Happy New Year. I'm making my rounds throughout the different city councils, different cities and different council within my territory. As you may be aware, I think from my previous time I was here, SoCal Gas Public Affairs manager, manager covering from the City of Lake Forest all the way down to San Clemente, City of Santa Ana, and unincorporates parts of the county. So, thirteen jurisdictions can be pretty busy. But again, the purpose of my visit is primarily for informational purposes. I wanted to bring to the attention to this body regarding some state activity, state legislature activity, that can potentially affect all of you and all of your residents. This past legislative session, there was a couple of particular bills that came into play that potentially, again, could have a huge impact. As all of you are aware, SoCal Gas provides safe, affordable, reliable energy to, from by Sunday all the way to San Diego, Mexican border, close to twenty-two million customers. And essentially, what these particular bills of legislation that we brought up in this last legislative session were intended to try to make the state entirely electrical. There was two pieces of legislation that would have required, number one, that by 2022, all buildings, all new buildings in the State of California be just all-electric. And there was another piece of legislation that by 2030 would have required that all, again, buildings, homes would be, have to be retrofitted from the use of natural gas to just becoming all-electric. I can share with all of you that I've been in other city councils where residents within the city have been coming before council, trying to figure out why their electrical bills had been so high. Now, and these particular bills were primarily during the summer time. Now imagine what that would look like if all your major appliances at your home were all-electric. So again, wanting to bring this item to your attention. And again, the intent is, well, there's good intentions off of it. The reduction of greenhouse gases is something that is important, and we should all work on that. But the way that it's being done is extreme, and it's something that is just not probable. And again, we want to bring this to the intention. And I can share with you SoCal Gas is taking steps in terms of reducing greenhouse gases. We're working closely with an environmental company in the inland empire where we're breaking down organic waste, food waste, breaking that down and putting into our pipeline. And right now, we also have a project with our northern territory. We're working with dairy farms where we're taking cow manure, breaking that down, and putting that into our pipeline as a form of renewable natural gas.
You have twenty seconds.
And again, so, my purpose and intention is just to primarily inform you of all these activities taking place in the state and making you aware. Again, in no way, shape, or form is SoCal Gas against electrification. It's something that residents and owners should be able to do, but it's not something that the state should impose upon anybody. So just want to make you aware, and thank you so much for the time and opportunity for you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, Juan. Thank you for coming. Our next public speaker is Stephanie Winstead. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Stephanie Winstead. Address is 29436 Point Royale in the beautiful city of Laguna Niguel. I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce. And, sorry. Oh, sorry. There you go. Okay. Okay, so, I'm here because I wanted to share a few things that the Chamber of Commerce is doing to outreach to the residents regarding the local businesses. You all should have received a copy of the Laguna Niguel Guide in your mailboxes. It has hit the city, and all of the residents have received a copy of it. There are some very informative articles regarding the city and benefits to the city. There's extra copies of this publication available in the Chamber office. Also, I want you to know that the Chamber does, or the Guide does work in educating residents with regard to things that are going on in the city, the benefits of the city, and Chamber businesses. Every single year that this Guide comes out, I personally receive a call from a resident who's looking for legal services. So, the Guide does work. Also, the Chamber is promoting Coffee with a Cop, which is next week, Wednesday, at Plumeria Cafe over in the Laguna Niguel Design Center. That's from about seven to nine AM. The first networking breakfast of the year will be Friday, February fifteenth, over at El Niguel Country Club, and that's from about seven-thirty to nine o'clock. The breakfast sponsor will be Amy Groupi with Laguna Niguel Wellness. I know that Councilmember Rains has visited Laguna Niguel Wellness, and I do encourage everybody, if you haven't been there, please check them out. They're a new local business, and it's wonderful to support our local business owners. Incidentally, Ms. Groupi is a retired teacher, so it's kind of near and dear to a lot of people's hearts. The Chamber would really like to be of service to the city with regards to the celebrations that are planning upcoming. I know we'll hear more about that later, but I just wanted to say that the Chamber is anxious and happy to be of service, and the logo is beautiful. Also, the Chamber members would like to be involved in the upcoming Youth Committee, High School, and Job Fair. So, if there's any way that the Chamber members can be of service in job placement. So, just want to let everybody know about that, if there's any outreach that can be, any outreach that can be done regarding that. These are all methods that the Chamber is trying to reach out to the residents, educate them regarding the benefits of the Chamber. And a lot of people don't know what the Chamber of Commerce does, and it's really important that the Chamber succeeds, and when there's a successful Chamber, there's a successful city. So, any suggestions on how to educate the residents with regards to the Chamber of Commerce would be very welcome. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, Stephanie. City Clerk Goma, is any more request to speak?
No, Mayor, that was the last one.
Great, thanks. It's such, public communications are now closed. We'll move on to our consent calendars. We have items one through nine. I want to check with my council colleagues and see if any of those need to be pulled. Sorry, starting on my left.
Five and seven for discussions.
Five and seven. All right.
Three, seven, and eight.
Three. Anyone?
Six and seven.
Six and seven. Okay, so that leaves, by my count, one, two, four, and nine. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to move the remaining items.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Davies, seconded by Councilwoman Jenaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Starting with item number three.
Okay, I had a minor correction to the minutes. I had emailed this in, but I was very late on doing that, so I'd like us to, when we approve it, to approve the corrected edition of the minutes on page six, under Council Report, second paragraph, third line. And what happened, I guess when the minutes were being transcribed, some sentences got collapsed, so it just doesn't make sense. So that, that should read, let's see, excuse me, the fourth line, and announce that she will be, no, after council, it should say, which is a forty-member advisory council to the Orange County Board of Supervisors and Orange County Office on Aging, and then delete the part about the city's thirtieth anniversary. So I move that we approve the minutes as corrected.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Davies, seconded by Mayor Pro, I'm sorry, moved by Councilwoman Jenaway, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Davies. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moves unanimously. Item number five, and that is to Councilmember Minigar.
Just a quick comment for the Director of Public Works. When I read your report, I realized that there has been forty professional companies that submitted their technical, and obviously, you know, their cost proposals to pursue the on-call bench for the city. We want to be transparent. I want to make sure that when the city selected those twelve, then the other ones that were not successful, at least they know about their rankings, so that that would preclude, you know, the city that constantly, we have to be responsive to them why they were not selected. So with that said, that's the only request I have, and I did talk to our city manager this morning about that. So in the future, anything like that, the way you do it for the construction projects, you know, you rank them, then you rank consulting services in the same manner, and a lot of other cities in California that I review those reports, they even include all their documentations. But I'm not asking for that because it's going to be, you know, a huge binder. So, we don't need that, but at least, as a matter of courtesy to those people, those companies, those individuals, those professionals that put their time, effort, energy, and obviously money to pursue opportunities with our great city, then, you know, we respond to them in a very professional manner, rather than just having twelve that are being selected, and they don't know other reasons why they were not selected. So I would appreciate it if, on the next submittals, then you would include that. And one final question, I presume that all these professional consulting firms, when there is a solicitation for any kind of request for proposal, then it's going to be on a competitive basis, correct? Meaning based on, number one, technical merit, and number two, based on cost, the best value to the city?
Yes, the Councilman Minigar, the Public Works Department evaluates on all of those criteria.
No, I know that. I know that. I just want to make sure that you do stipulate when the reports are being submitted to us. Thank you.
Any other discussion on that item? Is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve as stated.
Seconded by anyone?
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Minigar, seconded by Councilwoman Rains. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries unanimously. The next one is item number six, and that was pulled by Councilwoman Rains.
So, in reviewing the proposal from the designs company and the proposal that we're approving, there's some questions on, that I have regarding the statement, and it's on page fifteen.
If I could have you move that microphone a little bit.
Page fifteen.
Thank you very much.
So, in D, it says, "Should excess soil cuttings require disposal? Additional costs not included here will apply." So, I'm assuming that that is for the, at first I thought it was construction, because they also quoted something about the bridge of, the construction of the bridge, but they're really only doing the design part. But I'm assuming that that's the removal of soil for geotechnical testing. Is that correct?
Yeah, that item D is simply for the soil removal needed to complete their soils examination and make recommendations.
And you'll be overseeing that to make sure that we know if it goes over that, because it doesn't stipulate anywhere that it would go over that amount. It's approving for a certain specific amount.
Yes, city staff will monitor their work and make sure they comply with their scope of services in the fee proposal that's approved.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, I'll move the item.
Have a motion. Is there any other discussion on that item? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilwoman Rains, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries unanimously. The next one is item number seven, which was pulled by Councilwoman Minigar. Sir.
Just a quick comment. I'm very pleased that after two years that it came to the plan specs and estimates came to our city council for approval, that we can see this project finally getting into the fruition at the end of putting, you know, having served in the ad hoc committee for a number of years. The first one was internally illuminated, street name signs, that a lot of people in the city loved it because it rejuvenated, it revitalized the city. When somebody would come to our city from Mission Viejo, or Dana Point, or San Juan, or Alize Viejo, then they recognized that they are in the city of Laguna Niguel. And the second one happened to be these entry monuments and everything that goes with it. So, I'm very happy and excited to see this project to get constructed. So with that.
Great, thank you very much. I think there was other comments, Councilwoman Rains? There's, got a whole host of people pulled, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I have a request for Director Scott, and this is based on experience that we had in our homeowners association, and that before these are made, if you could actually obtain some of the lettering and the background material, and someone actually take them outdoors, so we're not just looking that on paper, it looks wonderful, because this happened with our homeowners association doing the monument signs where there was metal lettering. Once you got it outside and with the sun and everything, you could not see it. There was not enough contrast, even though on paper it looked like it did. So if we could obtain some letters and the background material and have staff actually take it outdoors and see, because I'd hate to see for us to go through this project and then our residents not be able to read the street signs because of the daylight.
Thank you very much for your feedback and input. As a matter of fact, we've included the requirement for the contractor to provide a mock-up for that specific purpose. That mock-up will be reviewed by the staff to ensure all of the materials conform with what is approved and are actually consistent with what will be out in the city right-of-way.
Okay, and the mock-up will be outs in one of our medians, then?
Yeah, we haven't decided exactly where to locate it, but yeah, we'll look at it in a situation where it will be indicative of the conditions that we would see out on the roadway.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rains?
I just want to say thank you for finally giving this to us for approval. The monuments look beautiful. I appreciate the diligence on the financial aspect of finding the best contract for us. And I know some of our residents are going to be very happy, because I met some of them at their doors this year, and that's what they asked for. So, thank you so much.
I actually want to thank Councilwoman Minigar, and the mayor for doing this. This has been a long wait for, and you guys have done a great job, so greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
And some members of the council will be very happy to have this done, too. It's, we appreciate it, and we appreciate all the effort that Public Works has been putting in on city staff. I asked a question today, and I just want to make sure that, I don't know that we have an answer yet. I see the pictures that are provided in the packet, and I remember during the approval that there was a discussion about whether or not the logo on the front of the signs was color or just brass. And frankly, I didn't recall. For some reason, I remembered, it might be color, but I was, I could have just remembered the discussion. Were we able to find the answer to that?
Yes, Mayor, I had the opportunity to follow up on that, and there is a city seal on the front and back, but they decided the last minute to not use the color. That was the committee's decision.
Okay, good. I want to make sure that we had it right, and that was what was approved by the council the last.
Correct.
Excellent. Okay, good. Okay, with that, heck, I'll make this motion.
I'll second your motion.
I'll second. All right, good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Thank you very much. That approve? It's proved unanimously. The last one was item number eight, which was pulled at least first by Councilwoman Jenaway.
Okay. Item number eight is for the thirtieth-year anniversary banners, and it's really exciting to be celebrating our city's thirtieth anniversary. I know when this came up a couple of meetings ago, as far as what we were going to do, there was some concern and questions about the overall cost of our thirtieth anniversary. And I know Councilman Minigar had some points on how we are, we all pride ourselves on being fiscal conservatives. I know when Mayor Pro Tem Davies and I are looking, when we're on the tier-three ad hoc committee, and we're looking at things that are going to be put in our beautiful new community center, and we're trying to shave off five thousand here, ten thousand there, so we could get as close to budget as possible. I just want to be sure, I guess I want to see how my colleagues feel about this, because this is an additional thirty thousand dollars for banners that are going to have a ten-month life. And I find that a little bit concerning. It's great to celebrate the anniversary. We've already spent about ten thousand, have another ten thousand. I know we have some other things coming up, which will be in one of the final reports on our agenda. But I did want to, I guess I'm a little uneasy about spending an additional thirty thousand dollars on banners, and wanted to see how my colleagues felt about that, if we should be doing any trimming, or what your tolerance is for that.
I'll respond initially that, thank you for your comments. I certainly think that in the one ad hoc committee that we've had thus far, there's been a big emphasis on making sure that we're doing this prudently, and staff is certainly helping us with that. You know, one of the challenges is we're trying to communicate with sixty-seven thousand of our residents. That comes out to less than two dollars per resident, and we would have been spending on the banners that we had anyway roughly twenty to thirty thousand dollars, which we do, or more, I don't know what the number is, but we do that annually anyway on the median signs and the banner signs, and this is just one of those opportunities to make a larger impact and reach a larger audience. The consensus out of, coming out of the committee was to try to get as many people as we could. That comes with some cost, and that was the overriding thought. I don't know if there are other comments, if anyone has. Mayor Pro Tem Davies?
Thank you. I know that during our ad hoc meeting, we were talking about costs and ways to cover them. Perhaps this is something that we could get sponsored, or perhaps a percentage of money put as sponsoring towards these banners. We were talking about some of the other events, and I know that we've got a great community. We have a lot of businesses out there, so perhaps that's an option. Thank you.
And just so the rest of the council knows, we do have the full committee meeting coming up. We will send invitations out to the rest of the organizations and entities in town that have a vested stake in this as well. We'll be meeting with them, getting their feedback, and that will certainly be added to our discussion. Did you have something to say?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and councilmembers, to add some more clarity to this, one of the things that we have been doing is we have been being very prudent, and we've been using unspent dollars in existing accounts that have already been appropriated for us. But like Councilmember Minigar had requested, we will be coming back for you to seek an appropriation request once we have a solid idea of what we anticipate we're going to need to do the types of events that this committee is planning. I also did not want to have to come back to you multiple times to seek appropriations. And at the very next council meeting, you're going to hear from our finance director on the mid-year budget progress, so you're going to know exactly where we stand this year. Once you hear that, you'll be better informed for when I do come back with an appropriation request for our thirtieth anniversary activities. And on the signs, the city does spend approximately thirty-five thousand dollars every year just for the street banners, and this particular contract's amendment is way more than just the street banners. This also includes window films that will be at the city hall, at Sea Country Senior Center. It includes flutter flags that will be at our three fire stations, as well as our sports parks, and vinyl-type signs that will be going on fencing, once again, at our sports fields, and we could put one up at the dog park and other places, and also signs that we will use to incorporate in the existing events to call attention to the thirtieth anniversary.
Okay, I have a question, just a clarification, because on the signs that go on the, in the medians, is this going to be in addition to or instead of, as far as the expenditure?
For this calendar year, you've already incurred the expense of the, so there's two types of flags that you place in the streets. You have your holiday celebration ones, and then you have your patriotic ones. We won't be doing the patriotic ones, because this would take the place of it and be up for the remainder of the calendar year. So that was something that our Public Works Director did negotiate, because the contractor would not have to do that installation and removal.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
More comments, Councilwoman Rains?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it is our thirtieth anniversary, and the money is available, so I think that it's not something that we're looking at doing all the time, and I think our residents are excited about celebrating, and the more we engage everybody, I think it'll be a worthwhile expense. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Minigar?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick amplification or clarification. I tend to agree. I mean, I like the proposal by Mayor Pro Tem Davies. If we can explore some potential sponsors, I do welcome that. But I've seen the quality of the signs, the text, the legend, the message. I fell in love with it, and it's once every five years or so. So I advocate for that amendment with that, you know, with that new statement that the city would be exploring potential sponsors to, you know.
Great.
Make some contributions.
We love you, too, and appreciate that. With that, is there a, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Rains.
A second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Jenaway. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries unanimously. So that brings us to the end of our consent calendar. Our first discussion item is Public Works item number one, and that is the preliminary design options for the existing Pooch Park renovations project, and the possible feasibility study for a further dog park. And I understand that our staff report tonight is by Public Works Director Scott. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. At the December eighteenth city council meeting, it was requested that staff bring forth options to renovate the existing Pooch Park located on Golden Lantern, next to Fire Station Number Forty-Nine. At the same time, it was also requested that staff explore the possibility of a second dog park somewhere in the city. The item before you this evening seeks direction from the city council to issue a request for proposal, or an RFP, to examine the existing Pooch Park and how it can be improved or renovated, while also exploring the potential for a second dog park. Any potential site for a second dog park will need to examine estimated site improvement costs, site access and parking, availability of utilities, and other necessary amenities such as a restroom that may be needed to support the intended park use. A feasibility study will look at all of these issues and make a recommendation as to a preferred potential location for the future second dog park. The city's adopted capital improvement program contains forty thousand in funding to pay for a study to provide concept designs for potential Pooch Park renovations. Adding the scope of work to include the feasibility of a second dog park may cost more than the available forty thousand in the CIP budget. Once proposals are received and evaluated for the RFP, an award of contract will be brought back to the city council, along with any consideration for additional funding needed to complete the feasibility scope of work in the RFP. Approximately ninety-five thousand remains in the design phase for the outdoor fitness park project that can be reprogrammed, should the city council opt to no longer pursue construction of the fitness park. So this evening, staff is recommending that the city council direct staff to add scope of work to study the feasibility of adding a second dog park in the request for proposal for the Pooch Park renovation project, and if needed, direct staff to reprogram the remaining design funds budgeted of ninety-five thousand dollars, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the outdoor fitness park area project towards a possible second Laguna Niguel Dog Park. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Director Scott. Just one question on the the community engagement part and the scoping, is that, is that part of what would be planned for the feasibility studies, opening up to the community for their input?
Absolutely. Engaging in the community and getting their feedback would be an essential component of that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let me open it up to my colleagues. Mayor Pro Tem Davies?
I'm so glad you asked me.
There you go.
This is an item I know that the mayor and I had talked about over the few years, and and I think I kind of personally is, there's a huge, huge amount of people that actually have dogs in this community. And you find out very fast when you walk in campaigns, because you know when they're coming at you. But what's great is, it's a place that actually brings all ages together. And I'll be honest, I go to La Paz in Mission Viejo. It's a beautiful dog park. And when I go there, I usually get a chance to talk to people, and I'm like, where are you from? Majority of them are from Laguna Nigal. And one of the reasons they say is, first of all, our dog park isn't accessible in regards to driving and walking. It's, you know, we don't have a separate area. La Paz has a small dog, a large dog, and a training area. They have about three acres. And the parking's adequate, as well as they have street parking. But what I liked about it is, it's all ages. I mean, I'll be talking to seniors, I'll be talking to kids, adults. It's a great place where we all come together, and this is Laguna Nigal. And I know the existing dog park we have, that really wasn't meant to be a dog park. This was kind of a second thought of what we had and what we could put there. And I would think that it would be great for us to really look into, at least go into the scopes, see what the cost would be, see if we have an area that we could use, so that we could have a great dog park that all ages could come together. And I think it'd be something that would definitely add to our community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rains, anything? Okay, good.
I have a lot to say about the dogs. As a dog lover, I think it's wonderful that our community already has a dog park. And I know that it has some of its own issues. I feel in the interest of making sure that we stay fiscally responsible, that we look at making the improvements to this park to see if it actually would meet the needs of the community prior to looking at another park, because we have one already, and we can improve on it, and there's areas. I don't really believe that we have three acres, like Mission Viejo has a lot more land than we do. So it's not the same character or style, or whatever. I understand that people want to have a place to go, and I appreciate that and respect that. So my thought would be, is it possible to make, put out an RFP for the improvements, and then do a study at a later date if that improvement doesn't really meet the needs of our community? Jackie?
That would be possible.
To you? Yeah, that would be possible. Okay, thanks. So that's it. Oh, I'm for having this wonderful thing. I just don't know that we need two right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jenaway?
Well, our dog park is an embarrassment in our city. And we, but the city council has already allocated funding for that. And I'm a little bit disappointed that it hasn't been taken care of prior to this. So we do have funding that we've allocated for, that we have recognized that it does need some refurbishing, some cleaning up, some changes that can be made. I don't know that we need a second dog park. I have two dogs myself, and so I know there are many dog lovers in the community who really don't need to use the dog park. And some parks are on a regional basis. So those who go to Mission Viejo, Mission Viejo is a larger city. I don't know that every city has to have its own three-acre dog park. We also look at our other neighboring city, Eliso Viejo, where they don't have a senior center or skate park, and they use ours. So we are in this area, used to people going to different cities and enjoying the amenities of other cities. So I really do think, though, we need to look at the current dog park and see how we can bring that up to acceptable standards. I don't believe that we need a second dog park. What I do find concerning, though, is the language in here to reprogram the funds that the city council had already allocated to the outdoor fitness park. We have something in Laguna Nigal that's called the Laguna Nigal Way, and that's how we do things, how we plan. We wouldn't be sitting in this city hall if city councils didn't make a plan and continue with that for years. We wouldn't be on Tier Three of our Crown Valley Park redevelopment if we didn't plan, set aside the funds, and then go into the project without incurring any debt. So a couple of years ago, our city council embarked on a multi-year plan for an outdoor fitness park with the recognition that the population in Orange County is aging, and we need to maintain physical and cognitive health. And there's a direct correlation between the accessibility of outdoor fitness areas and physical and cognitive health. There's also a direct correlation that those adults and seniors who are healthier, there's less of a cost to the society, to the individual, to their family, to their community, and to the government that provides them with services, programs, and facilities. So we looked at this as part of our long-term planning, and planned ahead, and knew that we wouldn't be doing it in one year or two years. It would take us several years to set the money aside, and then we would build the outdoor fitness park, not just for seniors, but also for what I term pre-seniors, adults, maybe 45 and above. Because if we keep them healthier, then they transition into the later years. You know, we're talking about, in our city this year, about looking 30 years ahead. Well, in just 20 years, in Orange County, projected that one half of the residents will be 45 and older. One quarter of the residents will be 65 and older. So every day, we are aging. Sorry to tell you that, but it's a fact of life. And in fact, in Laguna Nigal, because of our demographics, because of our housing prices, and everything that makes up our community, our median age in Laguna Nigal is about 6.7 years older than the median age of Orange County. So we should be in the forefront of planning for what's called the Silver Tsunami. And part of that is providing outdoor fitness areas, which we have planned for. So to reprogram money would be to derail that plan. This was a plan that was put in place a couple of years ago. Not that we were going to build it in one year, but we would save money over time. So to derail that is really a disservice to our residents, and it's very short-sighted. And it's really the antithesis to what we've referred to as the Laguna Nigal Way. And as far as the $95,677 that remain in the design phase budget for the outdoor fitness area, that's really not available, because we haven't finished the design of that. There's still work that needs to be done, because last time, when that came before the city council, the city council did not like the design. So we're not done with the design phase of that. So I think we should work on the existing dog park, bringing that up to standards. We have money that we've already allocated for that. We will probably need to allocate additional funding. But do not derail a project that we have a long-term plan for. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Minigar?
I didn't want to talk about this item, but now I have to. Well, I read the recommendation by the city staff, actually by the Director of Public Works. Specifically and explicitly, it does stipulate that it's going to be a feasibility study. The first thing in engineering on any project, either planning, design, or whatever, programming is needs assessment. As a part of this RFP request for proposals, consulting firms are going to respond to the RFP issued by the city of Laguna Nigal. Then the first item on that scope is going to be needs assessment. That's why it's called feasibility study. It's not the design that this would say that they're going to go ahead and design a second, you know, dog park in our city. Your points are well-taken. I don't dispute any of the stats that you provided us. I totally agree with you. But I go back to Councilmember Sandy Rains, four years ago, when I was knocking at 15,000 doors in this great city, I never realized that there are that many dogs in this city, because they were barking at me, and I, and, and
I apologize for that, Fred. I just
So I learned it the hard way. There are a lot of people in this beautiful, great city that have dogs. All my neighbors, with no exception, have dogs. So the needs assessment of the RFP is going to respond, is going to identify that if there is a true needs, which I believe it is going to be, and then we go from there. So I rest my case.
Great, thank you very much. Was there a further comment? Councilwoman Rains?
I want to make a further comment. The budget actually has future money allocated in future budgets, up to $1 million for other parks. So if we were to choose to allocate that 95% of that over for a feasibility study, we wouldn't really be just getting rid of a project. We would just be delaying it until we found a design that was appropriate for us. So although I'd like to see the park done first, before we move forward with another feasibility study for a second one, I don't feel that reallocating the money is kind of taking away a project for an all-ages park. So, that's all.
Well, when we're talking about reprogramming the funding, that's directing it to a different area.
But just for this year, there is funds for future years for other types of things.
Funds would then need to be reallocated by the city council.
Anything for Mayor Pro Tem Davies?
Yeah, in regards to the money that we put aside, if I recall, when we had the city council meeting, it wasn't so much that we didn't like the design, that I think we all thought perhaps we had different ideas of what type of park this could be, and maybe not being a senior park, but maybe being an all-purpose park, and there were other ideas. So I don't think it was just the design is why the council didn't push it through. And if you could, thank you.
Certainly. What led to this staff report was both a request made from the diocese to explore a second dog park, but also on August 21st, we brought an item forward to make an amendment to a contract with, for the design. It had some playground structures, but then it also requested approval for an amendment for the designer to spend more money on the design of the All Ages Fitness Center. At that time, it was envisioned to be at Yosemite Park, and it was determined that it wasn't going to work there. So we were going to allocate additional funds to study an area in Chaperosa Park, to have it put in. At that time, this council directed staff to proceed with the amendment to finish the playground structures, but to not proceed with the amendment to add additional amounts to study. So that is why staff used the particular language in the staff report. It was based on the decision on that staff report on August 21st, and then additional direction received from the diocese.
And just for clarification, because I know when we started early on, it was called a senior park, but it's not a senior park, because we're looking at all adult ages.
Well, thank you very much, and I'll take my opportunity now. You know, I sit on the Parks and Rec Commission as the liaison from the city council, along with others. And, you know, I do know that they are very intent. I spoke with Chairman McGinley about considering an inclusive park, which has a completely different component there. I like that very much. I think that there's an opportunity to blend what Councilwoman Jenaway is talking about with that type of a park. They may be the same thing. I'd also like to work with the county of Orange, because very similar things exist in our regional park, which is one of the largest parks, probably is the largest park in Laguna Nigal. And I think that their equipment there is very substandard. And we've had good success with them over the years with the pickleball court and other things. And there may be an opportunity to use that park to include this type of equipment there. And I'd like to very much work with OC Parks and maybe get the feasibility of doing that in that park. I think that would keep our costs way down. I must confess that I completely agree with your Laguna Nigal Way comment. It's exactly that way. We did receive community input, and I was surprised that we got a little blowback from at least one of the communities. And that caused me to think about where my heart really was in this, in this process, and maybe trying to open it up to something else. So if there is an opportunity for an inclusive park, and I've talked with Councilwoman Rains about this, and perhaps an exercise park, I think we have a lot of options in front of us. I don't necessarily believe that we're looking at a zero-sum game right here, because your comments regarding seniors and aging are undeniably true and correct, and I support them. And I think there's a way to make both of those happen. With respect to the dog park, the most correct thing stated tonight, perhaps in any meeting, is the deplorable condition of the dog park. It is, you know, it's fine. It's a field with a fence, and dogs don't get out, and that's something. But it is in no way in keeping with any of our other parks in town. To call it a park, I think, is doing a disservice to our other parks, and sort of the definite Laguna Nigal Way of how nice that is. I don't necessarily need two parks. There isn't anything inside me that says, my goodness, we have to have two. Anecdotally, I will tell you, the conversation I had with the new director for the Mission Viejo Animal Shelter and the deputy city manager for Mission Viejo was, they are having problems with their dog park, because they need more space. And they are saying, he said, "I saw on your agenda tonight that you got a dog park. That's fantastic." They're hoping to remove some of the stress off of theirs, because myself, I know, at least the Mayor Pro Tem and others, go to that park because it is so nice, and I think that's the type of thing that we can do. It is a regional solution, but our portion of that regional component, I think, is important that we move forward on it. The feasibility study is absolutely see what's the matter with the first one. Is that even possible? I would note that the design components of the existing dog park are uncomfortable at best. The parking lot is very far away from where you take the dogs in. It takes a significant amount of dog control from the car to that field to get them in. And quite frankly, I have some safety concerns about the sort of blind nature of that walk behind the fireplace, or the fire station to get up to the other park. So I'm not sure that that is, if I was going to put a park someplace, that that's where I would have done it. It's there, and I'm grateful for that, but I think that we have an opportunity to look at that. So maybe it is that there is another place that's better, and that can be, the existing one can be repurposed for something. Or maybe that it's perfect, and we just need to look at it. But my, my preference would be to move forward with this agenda item, to have that feasibility study done, to hear back on this park, like we've done from others, and see where it takes us. And I'm sure that that'll involve the Parks and Rec Commission as well, and I welcome their input on all of this. So I'll make the motion to approve the item unless there's other discussion. Okay, go ahead. You can still go.
So if we were to do a feasibility study while we were getting RFPs for the existing park, and the feasibility study came back to do another park, are we saying that then we would go move forward with two parks, then?
My position would be that we don't have to do anything. We can decide at that time and determine that. I don't want to duplicate efforts, but I think, in my mind, and we can correct this on the record if it's incorrect, is that the feasibility study is, is beginning with the existing park to determine what we have, what it can be. And if it can be something, then there might not be a need to move it. But the feasibility study could also be, at the same time, what are our alternatives if the existing park is inferior in some way, or not sufficiently large, or whatever it might be? And so I view it as both of those things at the same time.
Thank you.
I don't know if that is
It does. It clarifies it.
And what is the cost of the feasibility study?
It's going out to RFP, so I don't think we know yet, but
We would seek proposals from a number of firms and bring that information back to council with a recommendation, and we'll have costs at that time.
Okay, so there's no cost to the city to do the RFP process, and then when you get the proposals back, then we will decide whether or not we're going to spend the funding?
I will bring back a recommendation for an award of contract that the council can choose to award, with the dollar amounts that will be needed to do the work. Yes.
And in that, are they, are we going to look at the option of maybe enhancing and redoing the current park?
The request for proposal will include what you guys described as, how can we improve what we have? And also, is there room for a second park, or if the first park's inadequate, what else can we do?
The only clarification I'd like to make is, I really don't want to do an RFP unless we're intending on actually doing this. So, I mean, we'll obviously look at the numbers, but I'm not going to waste that time. But I'm getting a consensus from the diocese that there's at least that momentum here. So if that's the case, I have a motion to approve, as written in the staff report. I'll ask if there's a second. I'll ask if there's a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Davies. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are we voting on A or B?
I was voting on both.
Okay, I'd like to separate my vote.
Okay, well.
A, yes, B, no.
Well, the motion is to approve both. Is there a friendly amendment to move, to modify my, the motion?
Okay, I move that we bifurcate the vote and separate into recommendations A and B.
Okay, is there, is there a discussion? I just wanted to ask why.
Because I don't believe that we should be reprogramming the funding for the outdoor fitness area when we are not done with the design for that.
Okay, good, thank you. Is there a second for the friendly amendment then? Hearing none, then the friendly amendment doesn't pass. We'll move on the agenda item.
So, City Attorney, can I split my vote between A and B?
No, now that the motion to amend basically has failed for lack of a second, you have the existing motion on the floor, which is to approve both A and B together. So you can vote to approve A and B together or not to approve.
Okay, my vote is no.
Okay, so we have, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we have one no, so it's four one. So thank you very much. Our, our next discussion item is finance, item number one, and that is the comprehensive annual finance report, euphemistically called a CAFER, and related audit reports to the city of Laguna Niguel for fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen. And this will be handled by Finance Director Erlinson, and please provide us the staff report, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Before you this evening are the comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as the CAFER, and the related audit reports for the city of Laguna Niguel for the fiscal year ended two thousand seventeen eighteen. The city's independent accounting firm, the Poon Group, completed their audit of the city's financial transactions and performed additional reviews on specific types of activity, noting no audit findings whatsoever. Staff will present the results of operations for the fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand eighteen, and representatives of the Poon Group are present to answer any questions you may have related to the audit process. This evening, I will be presenting the highlights of the information contained within the letter of transmittal, management's discussion and analysis, also known as the M D N A, and the statistical section, all of which provide very valuable information to the users of the financial statements. The letter of transmittal provides context on the economy and the work program. The good news is that the economy is strong and growing. The city's largest revenue source, property tax, experienced a five point seven percent increase over the prior fiscal year, reflecting continued improvement in the local housing market. Sales tax revenue, the city's second largest revenue source, however, did experience a two percent decrease over the prior fiscal year due primarily to decreased point-of-sale transactions across most of the major industry groups, such as auto sales, building, construction, and service stations. Several significant projects are being planned, designed, and constructed over the next year or two. These include the Crown Valley Community Park Master Plan improvements, specifically the construction of the community building, the city's annual street resurfacing program, and the construction of entry monuments and decorative elements, of which you had a staff report on the consent calendar tonight. The M D N A summarizes financial performance highlights in two financial accounting presentations. The first set of financial information is presented in what are known as the government-wide statements, which uses the full accrual basis of accounting that is used in the private sector and has a longer-term perspective. The second set of financial information is presented in what are known as the fund financials, which uses the modified accrual basis of accounting and focuses on shorter-term spendable Beginning with the government-wide statements, citywide expenditures exceeded revenues by one million dollars, the result of the city's robust capital improvement program and increases in public safety costs. The end result is very positive, as the city concluded the fiscal year with a net position similar to stockholders' equity in the private sector of six hundred and thirty-five million dollars. Not too shabby. The fund financial statements specifically related to the general fund resulted in revenues exceeding expenditures by eleven point six million dollars before consideration of net capital transfers out of eleven point one million dollars, resulting in a net increase to the general fund fund balance of approximately five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Citywide total governmental fund balance for the fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand eighteen is seventy-five point six million dollars, of which one point eight million is classified as non-spendable and/or restricted by outside agencies for things such as community development projects, public works, and air quality improvement purposes. The remaining amount of fund balance has been set aside based upon the financial reserves policy adopted by the city council on June fifth of two thousand eighteen. The policy establishes reserves for capital asset replacement, including funding of the Crown Valley Park Master Plan improvements at a total cost of about twenty-nine point seven million or set aside, an economic uncertainty reserve equal to one-half of the city's annual general fund operating expenditures to address unforeseen circumstances such as a natural disaster. That amount is about twenty-two point six million as of June thirty of two thousand eighteen. There are also set asides for reserves for compensable leave and other post-employment benefits, with the remaining amount of the fund balance identified as continuing appropriations, defined as amounts previously programmed and appropriated by the city council during the budget process but have yet to be spent. The bulk of that amount is related to the city's ongoing CIP program. The statistical section at the back of the CAFER document is interesting and informative to both accountants and non-accountants alike. This section provides additional context on financial information, revenue capacity, debt capacity, demographic and economic information, and operating information. So as an example, you might be able to find the city's top ten employers this last fiscal year versus ten years ago. In addition to the CAFER, the city's independent accounting firm issued reports related to the city's twenty-nine appropriations limit, their review of compensation for the city manager, executive team, and other city employees, their review of wire transfers and ACH payments, and their review of journal entries prepared by staff. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the Poon Group did not report any findings on these related audit reports or the CAFER, meaning the city received a clean audit opinion. Francis Quo, CPA, the audit partner on the city's engagement, is in the audience this evening to answer any questions you may have pertaining to the audit process and/or the results of the audit as presented to you this evening. It is recommended that the city council approve the CAFER and related audit reports of the city of Laguna Niguel for the year ended June thirty, two thousand eighteen. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Great, thanks, Director Erlinson. Do I have any comments from the council? Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
I just want to say thank you to you and your staff. I know how much time this takes, and congratulations, great job with this, and hopefully we'll have another award coming this year. Thank you.
Any others? Councilor Rains?
I would like to echo that it's interesting to all people, whether accounting or not. I found it very interesting, and thank you so much for the work.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Jenaway?
Thank you, Director Erlinson, to you and your team. This is a great report. I especially like that line on page one nineteen that, where it shows the other governmental entities, and then it shows Laguna Niguel with zero debt.
That is nice, isn't it?
So stipulated, that's a good one. Anything else?
I just, per my discussions with the city manager this morning, I just had one short comment, and that was for the letter of submittal, I would have appreciated that if the lady partner of the auditing firm has a certified financial, I mean CPA, public accountant, just to sign that, everything else is fine. Thank you.
Great, and as you've already heard, it's, it's pretty fantastic to get this thorough report with zero audit findings. That says a lot about the state of our city, state of our finances. We've done significant work in the past few years over improving and solidifying those efforts, and it really shows here. I want to say thank you to staff and to our auditors, and that's it. With that, I'd entertain a motion to approve this item.
Move to approve.
It's moved by Councilwoman Jenaway, seconded by Councilwoman Rains. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our next discussion item is city manager item number one, and that is related to pedestrian and driver safety campaign, and I ask City Manager Ridge if she would please provide a staff report.
Okay, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and council members, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, and if you notice, it looks, it's supposed to look like asphalt with street stripes on it. But at the request of the mayor, we have been working on a campaign to increase safety and awareness among pedestrians and drivers in our community. This presentation is to update you on our efforts that we've taken to enhance safety and our planned future communications. The agenda item is before you, just simply as a receive and file. So safety of our residents is a top priority, and we are very fortunate that our city has been recognized for being one of the safest cities in California. Investment in police services by this council and past councils has greatly contributed to the safety of our residents, but the focus on safety does not stop when the individuals leave their homes or neighborhoods. Rather, it continues onto the public roads in which they, on which they travel daily. This safety campaign, hashtag street smarts, is intended to improve safety through awareness of all people who drive on our roads, walk on our sidewalks, or utilize our crosswalks and bike lanes. The relationship between the driver and pedestrian and the knowledge of safety techniques by both must be improved to prevent tragic accidents in the future. Efforts taken or currently underway to enhance safety on our streets and sidewalks include public works in conjunction with ongoing road projects, evaluating the street to better design safety and separation of pedestrians and bike lanes, publication of pedestrian safety trips, safety tips, sorry, and an anti-drinking and driving message from our mayor that featured over the holiday season, deployment of portable message boards throughout the city on speeding, and messages from our mayor on social media platforms on the dangers of speeding as well. In addition, over the past years, we have added pedestrian signals at five intersections. We have also installed ADA pedestrian push buttons to the benefit of the disabled in our community and invested in other pedestrian improvements. As our top priority, our efforts will continue under hashtag street smarts. And now I'm going to turn it over to our chief of police services, who will talk more about what hashtag street smarts is. I promised the analyst I would say hashtag street smart several times.
Thank you, City Manager Ridge. Police Services is certainly excited to be part of the Laguna Niguel Street Smarts Campaign, hashtag street smarts campaign. This effort is to better educate and advise our citizens on how our drivers and pedestrians can be safe when moving around our city. Through messages and reminders on our city's social media sites, as well as through our continued public outreach, we will educate the public on techniques they can use to safely navigate our city, whether in a vehicle, on a bicycle, or on foot. Simple messages, such as the one shown here, are meant to remind our citizens to take control of their own safety by doing, doing the little things they can do every time they are on our streets or our sidewalks. In addition, you will also be seeing public service announcements on our social media sites with helpful tips and reminders to obey the laws of the road. Unfortunately, one of my duties in this campaign is to remind the folks that may not always follow the rules of the road, that our traffic enforcement deputies are out there, and they take the matters of traffic and crosswalk safety very seriously. In fact, in just the past six months, our deputies have issued more citations for these offenses than they had in all of two thousand seventeen. Most importantly, these public service announcements will help remind everyone to take care of their friends, families, and neighbors by being street smart whenever they travel the roads of Laguna Niguel. I encourage everyone to follow this hashtag street smarts campaign on our city's Facebook page and at the city of Laguna Niguel, and on our police services page at O C S D Laguna Niguel Police Services. I just want to take this moment to thank you for your leadership on this, Mayor, and I know it's been near and dear to you since I came here that traffic safety is a priority. And I would also like to thank council as, in the list of things that you have done, this council has been fully supportive of police services, has added positions in an effort to help with traffic safety, and it's greatly appreciated. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Great. Chief, on behalf of the council, I appreciate you calling me out, but I definitely want to share, I'm only one voice of five up here, and this has been a resoundingly unanimous council since I've been on it in favor of traffic and public safety and the addition of additional police officers and motor officers to help enforce this. And I also want to say a special word of appreciation to our former Planning Commission Chairman, Steve Cienfuegos, who brought this issue to me years ago. We actually, in two thousand sixteen, provided him with an accommodation for his good ideas on that, and I promised him that if I ever got a chance to do anything about it, I would, I would, and here I am. So this is not an original idea to me, but it is one that's very important. You know, the truth is, is that each of us, as we get into our cars day after day, we are taking the wheel of a very potentially lethal killing machine. We have to be extraordinarily careful. I believe with all of my heart that this comes down to personal responsibility. It has to start with personal responsibility because we spend over fifteen million dollars a year on our police services, and I am convinced that we could double that number to thirty million and still not catch everyone and be everywhere at all times to stop this from happening. So this really isn't an enforcement issue. Our enforcement is in full mode, and this council has overwhelmingly supported our police services in increasing their patrolling. The council has approved the messaging boards, which are all over town, and they're moved frequently so that many people can see them in different places. We have had community outreach, and I'm sad to say my face is on many videos, I'm happy to say the chief's is on more, to try to get this message out. And I'm going to invite my council colleagues, they've got, our city staff has some creative ideas about how we can all get engaged in pushing this forward, assuming the agenda item is approved tonight. But this is, this is very important to our community. I'm honored to be joined this evening by Christie Clark in our audience tonight. Her husband Scott, as most of you know, was killed in a crosswalk here in town, and that hit home to many, many of our residents. It certainly hit home at my house. My son was one of Scott's students, and, and I didn't need the reminder, I certainly didn't need that reminder, and because we now have the reins of something here, we can do something about this, and I think it's, there's few things that we could do that would be, that would be more important than this one. So that said, I invite my council colleagues, if you have any further comments or questions. Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Thank you. Chief, question, what type of programs are we doing to work with the students and schools?
Students and schools get regular traffic safety classes. That's part of, a lot of that is done through the state, obviously, but that's actually a good idea now that you're saying that, to do a teen program. We have done traffic safety for any resident in the past, but maybe specifically for teenagers might be a good idea, and I'd certainly be willing to look at that.
Great, because I bring that up, because I think we're all very well aware as we're driving that it's a whole different age now, the headphones are in or the phone's down like this, and they don't even stop to even look if there's a car coming, they just keep going, whereas I think we've always been taught, you know, stop and look, and I think we need to remind them because they don't hear it anymore and they don't see it, and I think that's where actually a lot of these deaths are happening or accidents. It's really the pedestrian that walks out without looking, and it's not always the car, it's they're walking out in front of the car. So perhaps we can get together, I know we've been doing programs, the bullying prevention programs and women empowerment, maybe this would be another program that we could put together.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, several cities, Mission Viejo, Anaheim, and others, have recently adopted ordinances for pedestrians to make the use of headphones and texting and things in crosswalks, a violation of the ordinances, which I think is good, and it does sort of give equal balance to the responsibility that's on the pedestrian and the responsibilities on the driver. So we're trying to hit all the angles, if you excuse my pun. So, Councilor Rains?
I do believe there's a defensive driving course that you can take that also gives you a discount on your car insurances. Are you familiar with that, Lieutenant? you a discount on your car insurance. Are you familiar with that, Lieutenant?
No, not exactly. I mean, I have heard of that, but I couldn't tell you specifically.
So I'm just wondering if that's something that we might not be able to offer somewhere in our community room, so that, I, I know we're talking about the teens, but I think also seniors, as the seniors are increasing in our community, sometimes are inattentive, and maybe they could benefit from that, and also the savings from their insurance. So could we look into something like that?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Or Director Giglio, do we have any currently at the senior center?
I'll have to double check. We used to have one, 55 Alive, or something like that over at Sea Country. But we can double check and make sure they're still doing it.
As for the elementary schools, one of the things I was going to propose to engage the entire council was that we do a crosswalk safety day, where each of us pick off a different elementary school. We go out and we walk the crosswalks and try to do that as a public promotion as well. So I can envision each of us with our shiny vest and stop signs or whatever it might be. So we have a professional in our midst. And so maybe we need to get certified, Chief, I don't know. But, so things like that. I completely agree that, that it really is about getting children to understand it before they get a phone in their hands, perhaps. So that might be important. More comments?
Well, in addition to, you know, the driving with the phone and everything else, I mean, right now with the weather, we've had our, there's been so many occasions where you get into a little skid, and all I do is say to myself, thank goodness this didn't happen to a teen driver. Because, you know, a lot of that is experience behind the wheel. So anything that we can do to make them safer drivers, keep them safe, keep everyone else safe. So I know councilman, or Mayor Pro Tem Davies and I have been having the, the girl empowerment workshops, the anti-bullying workshops, and maybe this is something that we could incorporate into that as well, and follow that program. So we'll be working with you on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Great. With that, we merely need a motion to receive the report. So moved by, so moved by Mayor Pro Tem Davies, seconded by Councilwoman Rains. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
It's approved unanimously. The last discussion item is City Manager number two, and that's an update on the 30th year anniversary activities. And this one goes to City Manager Ridge for a staff report. Thank you.
It would be my pleasure to provide you an update on our 30th anniversary celebratory activities. I last provided a report on January 15th about the completed task, including the creation of the anniversary logo, banner design along with site selections, vehicle magnets for our police fleet, our fire fleet, and our city fleet, the Orange County Business Journal supplement that we've secured for, to feature our city, and then, of course, the social media contests that are ongoing, the anniversary coins, and the lapel pins. Since that last update, we have also designed and ordered a different style pin for our youth sports organizations. We held a meeting with the Business Journal folks to get an idea of what the layout for our supplemental section would look like. They also are in the process of reaching out to our major businesses in town to offer them advertising in the designated City of Laguna Niguel space. And with your action tonight, we will get all of the signs, banners, flutter flags ordered. And my Public Works Director has promised me that you will start to see those as early as this month. So. And then, most importantly, your ad hoc committee of the mayor and the mayor pro tem met with city staff this month to finalize the invitee list for the committee that's going to work with staff on planning the two events. And the first committee meeting will be scheduled, is scheduled for February 21st. And that is my update. Certainly, I'll look to the mayor and mayor pro tem if I left anything out from our meeting.
Pretty comprehensive. Any comments this side?
I just have a question. Could you maybe brief us on the organizations that you've invited to be part of the committee?
I could. Did you bring that list? I don't have it in front of me either. It was basically every organization in town, including religious organizations and service organizations, and a member from each of the commissions and committees, a significant presence from staff, the Chamber of Commerce. Be happy to circulate the list. It's definitely going to be out for the publication, but it's, it's very comprehensive. The idea being not too bad to start broadly, so.
But if we could get the list, that would be great. And then we'll see if there's anyone that may have been missed, we can let staff know.
Oh, I would love for you to have it. So if, if.
Perfectly. We presented it in a staff report, and based on your discussion, we made additions to it. So I will provide you the, the final updated list.
So it just keeps, keeps growing a little bit, which I think is great, so.
There's a lot to celebrate.
There's a lot to celebrate. So any further comments on this item?
I have one more question.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Do you have a budget for, on this year's anniversary? Is that what you were talking about earlier?
That's right.
And we'll see that after the meeting?
I wanted you to receive the mid-year budget update of how we're doing for the year, and then also give me some more time to put together some estimates to come back and seek an appropriation from you once. I didn't want to have to come back multiple times.
Okay, but this report has you ordering a bunch of stuff, but doesn't have the cost of it on here at all?
Oh, and all of that has been, as I mentioned before, what we have done so far, we've done from existing funds.
Okay.
Already appropriated. We've turning over every rock and using every available amount we have. But we are at the point where I need you to be familiar with where we're at and then seek appropriations from you.
Thank you very much.
And I see, yeah, it's one of the roles of the committee is to propose it, bring it back to us, and we can take a look through it. So with that, motion to receive the report?
So moved.
Councilwoman Jenaway, all seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. That brings us to the end of our discussion items, so we will move on to other business and council reports. So let's start today with Mayor Pro Tem Davies.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind you to the council that when it comes to council comments, we don't need to have a calendar of events, but what's really important is that the residents do have an idea of any imperative information that's come out of the meetings that we've had. With that said, we are going to be having our bullying prevention class tomorrow. That's Wednesday at Sea Country. Doors are open at 6:00. It's, it's free registration. We'll be starting at 6:30, along with the Get Safe program. They do an incredible program with these kids. It's amazing to watch them come in. They're giving them life lessons, you know, if they see bullying, to find a doubt, things where they can actually step up, have their voices heard. So we still have openings. Feel free to come in to Sea Country. You can call the police services and get the name as well. We will be doing another one on February 26th, and that is going to be from second graders to fourth graders. Tomorrow is fifth grade through eighth. So again, it's been a great class. Please come on out. Also, I headed up to Sacramento with the League of Cities and Transportation, Communication, and Public Works is the group that I'm on. We did go over the budget for this year. Lot of money going through housing, which is always good. We are, though, concerned, as we had all set out a resolution in regards to opposing SB 50, which is the Weiner bill. And that is a concern, because it is something that will definitely take local control away if they're able to come in and actually let developers, developers come in, take our land, and without going through planning or the council, and then no limit when it comes to density. So I mean, do recommend talking to your representatives about that. I also made the trip to DC last week, along with some of my other colleagues. It was very good. We had an opportunity to meet with the different administrations there. But the second day was great, because we did get to meet with Congressman Harley and some of the other new electeds in Orange County. One thing I am happy about is that Congressman Harley is on the Transportation Committee. I don't believe we've ever had anyone representing us on that. And we don't make a lot of money. We get, I think, 70 cents back to the dollar, back to our area. So it's something he said he's going to really work hard on, and I'm happy to see that. So it was a very good visit, a good opportunity to be there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jenaway?
Okay. Well, since our last meeting, I was elected Chair of the Orange County Library Advisory Board, and that is made up of the 24 cities that belong to the Orange County Public Library System. So I'm going to be working with them on strategic visioning, and let's look forward. What does the library of the future look like? And there are some incredible programs that are offered by the libraries. And many people don't know this. In fact, I was talking to some of our school trustees, that you can get actually your high school diploma through the Orange County Public Library, and they have scholarships available. So we met a young man who had some life challenges and was not able to graduate from high school, but he did go through this program and did receive his high school diploma, is now, and is now on a career track. Literary Orange was, which is their annual celebration of authors, is, was sold out in one week. And then, in two weeks, Gloria Steinem is going to be a featured speaker, and that is an event hosted by the Orange County Public Libraries. We have coming up next Tuesday, the Junior Civic Workshop featuring Laguna Niguel Police Services and also our explorers. So thank you, gentlemen. We look forward to your interacting with our middle school students, and I know that's always one of their favorites when you're there. So, and that is for middle school students, takes place right here at City Hall in the community room, starts at 6:30 next Tuesday. And along with my colleagues, met with Congressman Ruda and Congresswoman Porter, and heard what they had to say. They talked about what committees they're on. They're still learning the landscape of DC, but we look forward to interacting with them on issues of mutual interest and of concern to our residents. And I will wrap it up there, because I know we have some other council reports that may be longer.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Menegar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm very pleased to announce that the President of Southern California Association of Governments, which is comprised of 191 cities, has appointed me to be the only representative from Orange County. In the past 10 years, the council member, Michelle Martinez of the City of Santa Ana, has been sitting on the Executive and Administrative Committee of SCAG, and the only one from Orange County, and equating basically a specific platform. So having said that, for the first time, we have someone from South Orange County to be there, to be a voice of everyone in Orange County, to think about the future of Orange County. The Executive Committee of SCAG is responsible for setting all the policies, human resources, communications, operations, and above all, we are going to be sitting on a panel to hire the new CEO for SCAG, which is the largest MPO in the country. So, and also, as a part of that, next week, I'll be joining the President of SCAG to meet with the governor's new appointees and the lawmakers in Sacramento. So it's a big role, but I'm very delighted that out of 34 cities, they chose City of Laguna Niguel. So it's an honor for our city that we are a leader in that area. I attended OCAG and a bunch of other meetings that I don't want to bore you with, and also talked to our congressional representatives to understand their platforms, to understand their positions, to, to clearly hear from them how they think about the vital issues to our constituents and to the residents of our city and Orange County as a whole. So I think it was an eye-opening experience for all of us in DC and also locally. And last but not least, on, on January 24th, I was honored and humbled to be recognized by Laguna Niguel Historical Society. Out of the blue, they called me. I went there, and Senator Pat Bates, the President of Laguna Niguel Historical Society, recognized yours truly for services and contributions to the organization. But that, I keep it short and sweet.
Right. Well done on all accounts, both of you. Councilwoman Rains?
Okay. We all know how important education is. I was honored to represent our city at the RMIQ First Annual Gala, which is raising Moulton-Niguel IQ. And it was quite an event. I applaud the parents and, and folks who started the foundation and who continue to work hard to decrease class sizes and increase STEM programs at Moulton-Niguel Elementary. It was very fascinating. I got to spend some time with the principal and assistant principal of the school. It was really good. Also enjoyed having the opportunity to meet Congressman Ruda and hear his plan, and feeling hopeful that we are going to be able to work well together to meet the needs of our residents in our area. And then, this is our 30th anniversary celebration, the beginning of it. And we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the people who came before us. And so this theme this year of honoring our past, celebrating our present, and planning for our future, I think it's quite important that we consider starting a historical commission for our city to preserve the history of our city. So councilmember Menegar and myself would like to ask the staff to please put something on the agenda and invite Senator Pat Bates, our first mayor, to come and give a little bit of a presentation about our city and the history of it, and discuss that as a potential commission that we can have moving forward in the next 30 years. So with that, I'll say thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. And I just want to applaud all of you. That's an inordinately impressive list of not only new credentials, but exercising the credentials you already had. So thank you very much for all that representation. I had one of those, you know, life-booing moments where I was invited to present an award, to their surprise, to our local kinder care. As it turns out, our kinder care in Beacon Hill, out of the entire country, won one of only three awards. And we, we were there, and, and the kinder care corporate offices presented the teacher with a $10,000 check, and all the accolades, and there was press and everything. Wonderful event. And I've, it's my first time to get to visit with them. And I just want to say to the teachers, the parents, and especially the kids, what a great opportunity. I mean, I felt great all day. Just a great group of people, and I'm so proud to have them as part of our city. It's fantastic. This past week, it was my honor to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Washington. Fascinating group, 286 mayors from every city in the country, very large, very small, and right in the sweet spot where we live. So many, many, many speeches, meetings, and other things about what we can do to improve efficiencies. The takeaway from that is we are not alone on any issue. In fact, most of the cities, they've either conquered ours, or they're starting to experience our issues, or whatever they might be. So it's, it's a very, very helpful tool, and I have some information to pass along to the council and staff and others from that. And just wanted to echo the comments. I piggybacked that into the Association of California Cities Orange County trip to Washington to meet with our legislatures. Met with Congressman Ruda, Congressman Cisneros, Congresswoman Porter, and Congressman Levin. And without exception, had very, very good meetings. I mean, I, you know, it's not surprising that we might disagree on some of the policies, but the important thing was, is that we were in the room, and they were in the room, and Laguna Niguel's positions were front and center in, in all of those discussions. So they definitely know where we stand on things. I've been invited back to all of them, and those conversations are ongoing. So with the help of our council colleagues, that's, I think that's a very, very good thing for our city, looking for it. So thank you very much. Now then, we'll go to staff reports, and I'll start with Chief of Police Services.
Thank you, Mayor Jennings. First off, to recap, last Thursday, we had Pizza with the Police at Fresh Brothers on Lisa Creek. Thank you for coming out, and Councilmember Jenaway as well. Forty-one teens came to that event, which I thought was fantastic. For those of you who don't know about that, Pizza with the Police is basically where teens can come, share a piece of pizza, and have a conversation with some of our deputies, or myself, or Sergeant Songar in the back. But really, it's a great event to kind of lessen that barrier between us, and hopefully by the end of that, they understand that we're regular people with hope, dreams, and all the rest of that, and that they're certainly able to approach us or ask us questions. And it was just really a great evening. And I, again, appreciate your support for coming out to that.
And there were no arrests, correct?
None we could talk about. Just kidding. Last Wednesday, we did a drug takeback at Sea Country at the Senior Center. In the two-hour period that that was done, our folks collected 58 pounds of prescription medications. Again, I think this is vital to getting those medications out of medicine cabinets, drawers, before any teen wants to experiment or, or anything else bad can happen. So really, a successful program. I thank the city for their efforts to publicize that. As always, we always have a, a option to come to our police services and bring in your medications any day of the week, eight to five, Monday through Friday. And as well as that, we will be hosting a Saturday drug takeback in April, along with the rest of the nation, to take back drugs or prescription medications for those who can't get here, you know, during weekdays because of their work, or their work schedule. And I'll give you more information as that comes up. Just to piggyback on, on Councilmember Davies, the bullying prevention workshop for grades five through eight is tomorrow. We do have openings. We have strongly encouraged you to register, but folks can just show up and we'll register, register you at the door. This is a fantastic program. This is not just for kids who may potentially be bullied, so I guess I'm talking to the parents now. This is also for just regular kids who, they're given techniques to help in those situations, to, not that they're the bully, or that they're the person being bullied, but just remedies that they can, they can, they can do when they see that situation happening. It's really a fantastic program. It's really a fantastic program. Last Wednesday, our Emergency Services Coordinator, Phil Robinson, put together an emergency operations exercise. We did it here in the community room. For those of you who don't know, we have the ability to put an emergency operations center together, those supplies are here, and that would be in the community room. So it was a great program exercise. We did a simulated earthquake, many of the department heads participated, many of the city employees participated, and it was just a fantastic way to get that ball rolling in case we are in that, or we are met with some natural disaster, or something where we are forced to open an EOC in the community room. So I thank Phil Robinson for that, he put a lot of work in that, and I think it went very well. And then lastly, next Wednesday, February 13th, from 7 to 9, we are hosting a Coffee with the Cop. That will be at Plumeria Cafe. Again, this is a community partnership, we don't know what's going on in the community always unless it's a call, or unless we find out things from the citizens. So please, I invite all citizens to come to that, ask us any question you want, or just tell us what's going on in your neighborhoods. We appreciate it. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Chief McGeele. Fantastic report, and thank you for all you do. Our CAFRA expert, Director Erlinson. Great, thank you. We'll skip over, brand-new city attorney, Mr. Ennis, welcome.
Mayor Jennings and the Council, I want to thank the Council for the warm welcome that you've all provided to me. It's been nice to meet all of you. I also want to give some thanks to City Manager Ridge, and Deputy City Manager Bell, and City Clerk Gomez, for all the assistance that they provided to help me understand the facility, how things work here, and the operations, and certainly all the issues. So I look forward to working with all the staff, and certainly with you and the Council and the community, on the many important issues facing the city. So thank you.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate you being here. Community Development Director, Arduña.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Awesome. City Clerk Gomez? Parks and Rec Director Giglio?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that tickets are on sale for three brand-new upcoming and exciting events. Jurassic Trails and Tails on Friday, February 8th, from 7 to 9 at Sea Country Center, that's, excuse me, that's $8 per person. We already have over 100 people registered, pre-registered for that event, we're expecting probably 200 to 300 people to attend that. The Sweetheart Dance at Sea Country Center on Saturday, February 9th, from 2 to 4 p.m., that's $12 a person. And the Hansel and Gretel Family Opera at Sea Country Center on Saturday, February 23rd, from 7 to 9, and Sunday, February 24th, 4 to 6 p.m., that's $10 pre-sale and $15 at the door pending availability. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you very much, and those are great results, by the way, that's fantastic turnout. Deputy City Manager Bell?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Great. Public Works Director, Scott?
Nothing more this evening, thank you.
Great, thanks for all your help tonight on the reports as well. City Manager Ridge?
I just have one item. A couple of weeks ago, I was appointed by the Orange County City Managers Association to serve as the South County Representative on the County of Orange's Commission to End Homelessness, so I will keep you updated on those efforts. And then I do want to thank our Finance Director, Steve Erlinson, and his staff for the fabulous work on getting the CAFRA completed.
Great, thank you very much. Before I adjourn tonight, as you know from our last meeting, we've been trying to make an effort to honor our past, to celebrate our present, and plan for our future, and bring in people that are important to at least one of those. Tonight, we have a person who is definitely in the celebrating our present and planning for our future, and that's our brand-new city attorney, Mr. Ennis. So if you don't mind, I have something for you, and if you'd mind joining me in the well for just a moment. And on behalf of a very grateful city council, city staff, and all the 67,000 residents, I wanted to say welcome, and our way to do that is to give you the pin, which makes you official. So wear it with pride, and we're very happy to have you here, so. Thank you so much. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 9, sorry, 8:52 p.m. Thank you very much, we are adjourned.